Welcome to the continuation of the City Waterloo Council meeting, Monday, January 28th, 2019, now at around 3:30 PM. Do you have any further disclosure pecuniary interest, the general nature thereof? Seeing no further ones, a moment of reflection. At the beginning of this council meeting, we pause to think about the needs of our community. May we show wisdom and compassion in all our decisions. First up is, we have a set of minutes, A, B, C here. Does somebody want to move the minutes? Counselor Bodley, Counselor Veath, all those in favor? It's all us, thank you. Next up, reports of committees. We have two reports from prior committees, moved by Counselor Henry, seconded by Counselor Freeman. All those in favor? It's all us. And now, we're going to do a little switcheroo here. We're going to move up item 10A, Staff Reports, Procurement Awards Summary Q4, prepared by Tracy Bell. Does anybody have any questions of Tracy on her report? Seeing none, I'll look for somebody to move that. Counselor Henry does, Counselor, show me a new name. Counselor Vasek does. All those in favor? It's all us. Thank you, Tracy. Delegations, back to item seven, Communitec, Community Update 2019, and Rick Coach Emilio, welcome, and you are the CFO. Welcome very much, Rick. Thank you.
Yes, alright. Thank you very much for having me today, and thank you for this opportunity to update you on Communitec and what we've done in the past year, which we move forward as we grow. So Communitec in itself, you know, we see our movement of supporting 1,400 companies as of today, and helping those firms scale and grow their businesses within Waterloo region and beyond. But the real way Communitec does that is we do it in three manners, one being a place. We have two locations, one within Kitchener and one in Waterloo, that can help and support companies of all stages and sizes. As well, we have an ecosystem. They don't do this alone. We partner with the municipalities, universities, colleges, and our tech innovation partners like the Accelerator Centre, Velocity, and Laureate Launchpad. And that ecosystem helps these companies grow and tackle problems that they may not encounter or have encountered. And thirdly, we take a look at the programs as well. So we have programs for every stage of organization, right from startup to scaling companies, right through to large corporate innovation organizations that need to think differently, and so they look to us as a trusted partner that can help them do that. So what have we done lately? We've got a whole bunch of highlights up here for the last year. So Communitec has hosted over 252 events, just shy of 10,000 attendees. We've helped 124 employers find 1,075 job seekers. There's been an attraction of 338 million in risk capital. We've taken steps with a third party to evaluate Communitec, to understand, for every dollar of funding that we provide, that is provided to Communitec through public sources, that provides $22 of economic impact. So our friends at Deloitte had undergone an extensive review of Communitec and the companies that we service. So moving a little bit more closely to Waterloo at the Data Hub, so we moved in two years ago, and here's just a highlight of the tenants that we have at the Data Hub. Back when we started conversations with our idea of expanding into Waterloo, you know, our goal was to become the connective tissue that brings the players in Waterloo closer together, and that would be the Perimeter Institute, Quantum Valley Investments, our friends at Laureate, the Accelerator Centre as well, just to continue and deepen that ecosystem ties that we have. What's notable on the tenant lists as well, too, is that you see some corporate partners within CIBC and IBM, and so CIBC was one of our founding partners, and as of the last few months, they've actually expanded their space and programming that they have right here at the Data Hub. And IBM, with its access to Watson, has also been a great partner. But what's near and dear to my heart is actually some of the startups that we've been able to support right here at the Data Hub. So, you know, just to point out a couple, Kite and Skywatch, both came into the Data Hub with less than 10 employees and are operating now after two years in that 15 to 20 mark and looking for more growth. So we're fairly happy to see that continue forward. So it's not just about the tenants, but we've done quite a bit of activities at the Data Hub. Sorry, did we?
Wait a second.
Yeah, okay. That's okay. So the activities, there was 37 different development programs that we did, all focused around commercialization of data, machine learning, cybersecurity, smart cities.
Hold on, how, what's?
I'm sorry, I just don't think I should work here and trust them, can I? Think about support or understand.
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry, sorry. Go ahead.
No, sorry, my, my bad.
Turn to Clark here.
My question is just, so my husband is one of the, his company is one of your people. So is that a declaration of pecuniary interest?
Through you, Chair, to Counselor Vasek. As Clerk, I can't comment if you have a pecuniary interest, but I would suggest to you, if you feel you might have one, that you probably should declare it and leave the chambers, yes.
Great, thanks. I'm going to do that, declare pecuniary interest of this conversation, and I'll be right back. Whenever.
If you feel so, it's, I don't think we're making any decisions on this, but only you can decide this, unfortunately. We can't advise. We can't advise you to make a decision on this one.
But they tend to be around decision-making, not just reports? Yeah, okay, then I'll stay. Thanks. Sorry, I just didn't want to keep going if I was supposed to leave. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt your presentation.
That's okay, that's quite all right. Yes, so the skills development sessions that we hosted, as well, we've got six data-focused knowledge experts in-house that have helped support 382 companies over that time. And what's been great to see as well, and again, this ties back to part of our original vision, was to see some of the provincial programs start to take place in Waterloo as well. And so through the Ontario Centers of Excellence, we have three advanced technology platforms that are rolling out as we speak. So the first one being around autonomous vehicles in the AVEN program, the second being with IBM and their access to Watson, and the third being through the 5G networks, so that next generation of broadband. Those are all projects that are undertaking right now, and we're looking to see some great progress as they come on in the days to come. So as we move forward to what is next, so as we mentioned, you know, our core is always to help tech companies start, grow, and succeed. We see a great opportunity that's been developing and emerging in the community, so we want to support that next set of companies get to 100 million in revenue, and we see that being very likely over the next four years, quite a few growing. And that means quite aggressive growth in job creation is going to be happening with these companies as they push forward. So how do we do that? Talent, obviously, is going to be a very big indicator to this, and something we have to continue to drive. So we're continuing to be focused on the global skills visas, on-campus recruiting, expanding the word of Waterloo region outside of the universities and colleges that are here as well. But what becomes a very big element of this is transportation, and so we've become big supporters of ION and that two-way all-day-go, and I believe the Metrolinks has just announced that they're bringing that express train back home at 4:50 today, so that was nice. But without saying, we'll also need to help support their capital needs, and we've got folks who are actually bringing a group of companies across Ontario to New York this week to do a corridor demo day where they get to pitch to venture capitalists and get exposure out there. But more importantly, well, as important, I should say, is we want the tech company to grow and succeed, the tech companies to grow and succeed within this community, but we don't want them to be insulated just what they do, we want them to support the community at large as well. So we've partnered with the KW Community Foundation and Jerry Reimers to act as a support for those companies that are growing. We're giving them playbooks on how to think about corporate social responsibility, how to think about the community and engage them in a larger way. As well, we've organized and spearheaded a few activities, or helped organize and support some activities around pitching and the Communitec Giving Guide. So that leads us into another great community activity that is in our second year, that's True North and their Tech for Good Festival that we will be doing on June 19th through the 20th. So we've recently announced three speakers, Sir Tim Berners-Lee, who's the inventor of the internet, Kara Swisher, who's co-founder and editor of Recode, and Thomas Friedman, who is an award-winning journalist. He's won three Pulitzer's. So we're happy to be working with the greater community in this. It's not just a conference, there is a festival, and we're excited for the City of Waterloo to be involved even further this year with some activities at night as well, too. So just as a reminder, so True North was a concert, a conference last year, it was our inaugural, we had 2,200 attendees from over 15 countries and 50 partners. We were hoping to surpass that with 2,500 attendees, and things are looking good and growth is looking great. But all in all, we're just here to say thank you for your partnership, and for those of you that are new to the council, love to give you a tour of the Data Hub and make it available where possible. Thank you very much.
Wonderful, thank you, Rick. Questions on Communitec? Alls I'd say is thank you for all that you've done for Uptown Waterloo, certainly with the Communitec Data Hub there, that's been an exciting partnership to come together and make sure that we continue to grow the vibrant Uptown, and we can just see the burgeoning place that it is, that little, little building has all those companies in it. So, no, thank you very much, Rick.
Thank you, we're excited to be here.
Thank you. Now we move into presentations on our business plans, and first up, Waterloo Public Library Business Plan, brought to us by Karen Covielo, Board Chair.
Hello, Mayor Jaworski and Council, it's lovely to be here, Mr. Anderson and your entire wonderful team, it's good to see you all. I'm here to present on behalf of the team at Waterloo Public Library, including our CEO Lori Clark and Gloria Vanique Myers, is that it right? Who's our Deputy CEO at the library. I'm really proud of the work that we've done together to get us to today, and I have to say, I was taking a couple of questions over the weekend, and it's the first time I can actually stand here, and I do have this longitudinal view to the library because this will, I'm starting my 13th year as a member of this library board, eight as a council rep, and now four plus four as a citizen. It's the first time I can stand here in this room with all of us and say, we're feeling really confident about the future of the Waterloo Public Library and this community, both from a capital investment piece and a long-term sustainable funding. So a lot of heavy lifting was done last term, it's been done over the last two decades, really, to get us to this point, and I want to thank you for that. So just to look forward, we are here to present our 2019 business plans, and I'm going to use the little doodad on there, there you go. We did a strat plan refresh last year, we did a strat plan, really thorough, deep-dive strat plan in 2014, and we felt that it really, we just needed a check-in last year to keep us on track, because really what our strat plan was doing was positioning us as a really relevant part of what the City of Waterloo is trying to accomplish when it comes to creating a healthy, vibrant, literate, intelligent, innovative community. And we, so we did a little check-in with our team and some of our stakeholders to put a little bit of a fresh face in our strat plan, and this is where we landed, that we will continue to activate our library as space and place, creating, particularly focusing on creating the Eastside Branch Library Strategy, looking forward to the build in the next couple of years. Library as a catalyst, which is really positioning our library as an active ingredient in what we're trying to accomplish in Waterloo. And part of that will be launching a two-year pilot program to offer mobile Wi-Fi hotspots for lending at our McCormick branch. And our third one is our aha moment that we had, is that we really want to become that go-to place in our soft infrastructure in this community. If people are wondering, what about language services, what about this, what about that? Of course, the library. And part of that will be implementing a customer relationship management system, a CRM system, to provide new customers with a welcome package and really understanding our customer base in a more thorough way, holistic way, so we can target our programming directly to them. So those are three examples of how we are activating our strategic plan going forward. I wanted to give you a little bit of an update on our usage in the community. I'm always, I've always been really proud to tell people that the Waterloo Public Library is one of the, has a positive growth track, and not all libraries, not all public libraries can say that, but we're a nation of where we live, but also what we're doing as a library system in order to, in order to make sure that we're relevant and meaningful to our citizens. So we have, again, year after, year over year, seen an increase in usage. We're up 10% in visitors per day from 2017, we're up to 4,500 visitors per day, either physical visitors or online. And we also have some total numbers of, we had 354 visitors to the main branch, 340,000 visitors to Harper, of course, and, because we know how wonderful Harper is, and, I'm unbiased there, I know, and 100,000, first time we've broken 100,000 visitors in McCormick ever, so we're up another 8% last year in our visitors. So we are on a constant progressive trend at the Waterloo Public Library. It's something we can all be proud of, and it's something I know that we've all worked towards over the, over the past, I'd say, two decades in Waterloo, so something to be proud of. I'm happy to take questions. That's a pretty, that's probably the quickest slideshow I've ever been part of, I have to say, but I think that might have been on purpose, these guys are all laughing at me right now. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Wonderful, thank you, Karen. Questions on library? And if not, I will have some. Counselor Bodley?
Thank you for that. Something that I heard very frequently in the west end of the city, with the Harper Library, Harper Library is amazing and awesome, and it gets utilized very frequently by my family. But question around when or if it's possible for it to be open on Sundays, I have some feedback from people in my life that suggests to me that usage per hour on Sundays is typically significantly higher than other days of the week. So even if it was a funding perspective that suggested that we were closed on another day, to be open on Sunday would potentially increase visitors, and I'd just like a comment on that, I guess.
This is an ongoing conversation we've had at the City of Waterloo with, I think, between us for years, even when I sat in your seat, Royce, and it's, and it's an interesting puzzle, because we would love to have the library open all the time. That would be, that would be our ideal situation, would be to have all our branches activated at all times. But that's, it's not feasible under the current funding model, but we also feel that we've got the supports, the bench strength in our system, that if, if the Westside Branch is not open on Sunday, the main branch is, and if the main branch isn't open, then the Harper is. So we do have, we do have that flexibility in our system, that we do have services, I'm not talking 24/7, but we do have, we do have services every day in our library system.
And we do have one branch that is open 24/7, the one WPL.ca.
That's right.
And the, do you have any further questions, Counselor Bodley? Okay, just to that, I thought, I thought we're going to hear back that the actual decision on how often it opens actually comes back to this horseshoe.
Well, it comes down to the funding, right?
Yeah, exactly.
So we work with an envelope of funding, and then to find a day that isn't used is hard. I can tell you that, it's really difficult.
And I suspect we'll see that at Rim Park as well, where it's an active building. My question's going to be on the services online, speaking of the online branch, and how that CRM might dovetail with that, because if anybody here goes on, logs in, spends some time on the online branch, you can spend two hours there just finding new learning opportunities, all the different offerings that are up on there. Does that dovetail into the work that you're going to be doing here, that you're including the online branch in the CRM?
I would look to Gloria, perhaps, for a quicker answer on that. Do you think that's something long-term? Or Lori? Lori's got a bit of a cold, so I didn't want to put you on the spot.
Yeah, so my question, my question is just on the online branch, which is, has a wealth of information, how that might dovetail with the new CRM discussion or?
I think it could. It's really early in that project, but we will be building profiles on our users, and so we will have that information for online users also, and then we can target, if we get new databases, new ebooks, it could be all kinds of opportunities. So that's a great, great question.
Wonderful, thank you. Counselor Vasek, Counselor Bonagor?
Through you, Chair. So I love the library, my family loves the library, it's my kid's second favorite thing next to TV. So we used not going into the library yesterday as a consequence for some pretty rough behavior, and he was really sad. So, so thank you for all that you do. My question is around the modeling Kitchener, where they have a social workers, or a social worker now, or more of a community worker, and I was just curious a little bit more if you have staff in that capacity, or if you've been thinking about putting staff in that capacity, and I realize I would have a funding application as well, but I'm just curious about your conversations, if any, around that.
Yeah, and that's a recent development in Kitchener, I believe, right? Yeah, so I think that's, we're always, we're always having our eye to what's, what's happening in library land, as we like to call it. I also like to, I like to, I like to make sure everyone understands that we, we work in a complimentary fashion to the City of Kitchener Library, and to the Cambridge Library, and to the regional Waterloo Library, because we feel that it's, it's a, it's a whole basket of services that we can provide the community, and because we have reciprocal borrowages all over the place, and, and we really work as a system, it's, it's, we try not to get into the whole, they have it, so we have it, need to have it, et cetera. We look at it in a holistic way, but I'm, I know that we have, we have had conversations about the needs of our citizens, how they, how we could address them in different ways, and I know our staff are prepared at any time to deal with things that happen, and they do happen, for sure. I think, I know Jennifer, you believe, you know that I believe we live in a bit of a bubble sometimes in Waterloo about our reality, but I would be totally open to having that conversation with you over coffee, and let's figure out some, some moving forward steps.
Wonderful, thank you. I think the focus on the Albert McCormick Library for the mobile hotspots is simply ideal, because that's where the need is.
Yeah, and it's, if you have a chance, I know Counselor Veath would love to take you on a tour of McCormick, because it's such an integral part of her ward, and, and, you know, people over the years have, have questioned why we keep McCormick open, because it's a small library and it maybe didn't have the numbers, you know, it's hard to compete with a Harper and a Maine, but I'm going to tell you that the McCormick Library is, is the heart of that community, and, and it's, it's our highest need community in Waterloo, and, and as long as I'm standing here, and I think, from, from my conversations with your colleagues and lots of people in this community, that McCormick is such a, such an important part of the services that we provide in, in that community.
100,000 visitors, you still have to find one of the two secret entrances.
Yeah, you still have to, like, get a map to get in there.
Counselor Bonagor?
Through you, Chair. Thank you again, if I can echo Counselor Vasek's comments, we love the library, so thank you to all of you for what you do. Libraries, though, they're so much more than bricks and books, so can you give us a bit of an idea of some emerging trends when it comes to usage of space, and what kind of borrowing or requests are being made?
Well, it's very exciting, because we're, we're in the middle of that conversation right now, because we are building the Eastside Branch, and, and I did feel to mention earlier that we have a new council liaison on our, on our board, Diane Freeman, who is, we're excited to be walking this walk together in order to deliver on that branch, and we know it's going to be a different type of library from what we're used to seeing. So when we built Harper back in the day, it was still, the conversation was about more traditional library models. Now we're talking something different. There will be open spaces, transformational spaces, walls that move, sound, soundproof rooms for music, for creating things, all sorts, there's going to be gaming at this new library on these sites. So we know that library trends are always evolving, and, and we see it show up in different ways. So we're counting on our team back here, working with the good folks at the City of Waterloo to figure that magic out. Is there a follow-up to that?
If I may, that sounds wonderful, at the Eastside Library, but like, what about the space usage elsewhere, and how those things can, like, what are we hearing from people, what are they asking for, and how able to accommodate that at the moment?
At the moment, I'd say, we're always, we're always tweaking things, making sure that things are available. It also shows up in language and books and different types of actual reading materials, but from the hard, the hard fix space thing, it comes with, I think our biggest opportunity comes with the new build. And again, it's going to be a complimentary system. It won't be, the Eastside is built, then we're going to replicate it, replicate it, replicate it, because we don't really see that as good use of our resources, to just keep chasing that, chasing that target, if that makes sense. We're such, it's a pretty small system, we really have, will be a four-branch system, and geographically, we're quite, I think we're quite, you know, lucky to have everything within, within, you know, a reasonable distance, so we're looking at that complimentary model and moving resources amongst the, amongst the branches. Yeah.
Seeing no further questions? Thank you very much, and please pass along our thanks to the new board.
Yes, and thank you for our wonderful new board. We had our first meeting last week, and it looks like we're going to have a great four years.
And to Lori and all the team, thank you.
Thank you.
See you. And next up, Community Service Business Plan. Commissioner Mark Dextrow will kick things off.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council, it's my pleasure to serve as Commissioner and provide introductory remarks for the Community Services 2019 Business Plan Presentation. The directors are here with me, I think we got the wrong one, we'll, I'll just pause while we load up Community Services.
You could tell us a bit about your team while you're there, if you want to.
I will do the intro remarks, that's good. Thank you, Mayor, for the priming. So with us today are our directors. I'm going to go off the business plan, so I don't need the slides at all, myself. So with me are the directors from each of the areas, Community Programming and Outreach, Recreation Services, Environment and Parks, Facility Design and Management, Fire Rescue Services, and Municipal Enforcement Services. Sitting in for Shane today are Chris Mulhern and Shamir Metta, sitting behind me. As well, we have a number of the managers from the divisions here and deputies, so we welcome them as well and appreciate their input. But also behind the scenes, there's some 600 members within the department that support Community Services, so I want to acknowledge them. Our mission statement speaks to a couple of points, and I'll read it, since it's not on the screen. "We develop and promote programs, facility spaces for recreation, community activities for all citizens. We ensure heritage in our community is nurtured and celebrated, and we take active measures to provide a safe and secure community by safeguarding the lives and property of residents and the public." So a couple of key points, just to focus in on that. The first one being around recreation and community activities for all citizens. "We're the largest community-facing department within the city. Our programs, operations, facilities, and parks are throughout the city, where we have multiple connection points with residents and visitors." The second point within our business statement speaks to provide a safe and secure community. "So we ensure that the, they are, people are safe when they visit our facilities, our parks, or even within the streets. As well, we support the community in their neighborhoods and homes on a daily basis. We may encounter folks on maybe perhaps the worst day of the year, of their lives, when they have a fire or an accident, whereas on the other end of the spectrum, on the best or the most memorable day, when they score their first goal themselves as a child, or they remember that, or as a, as a parent, you're seeing that happen, or a grandparent." So that's all important in what we do. "Our mission also speaks to the alignment and collaboration amongst the division, and I believe it's strong. For example, at an operational level, we've delivered the Ontario Volleyball Association Tournament on a regular basis. All divisions are involved in that delivery. So we have recreation as a primary host and offering that day-to..." So we have recreation as a primary host, and offering that day-to-day customer service. We have parks providing pre- and post-maintenance for the, for the site. Facility design and management ensures the heat is on in the building, and all is well with all the spaces. Community programming and outreach has those touchpoints perhaps before the event occurs to ensure any of the groups that are regular tenants and users have other facilities to go to. Municipal enforcement is key on our parking plans on-site, and as well within the community. In fire rescue, assist with any pre-event permitting that's required. At a strategic level, the success of the recently improved neighborhood strategy, again, speaks to that collaboration amongst the division. Each division has provided input into that strategy, and continue to use it in the business plan moving forward for this year and the years to come. The strategy has been a springboard for us as a department, and where it's, let's explore, and we want to foster that culture amongst the department. If a new idea comes into any staff level, we do want to think about, could we do it, is it possible? Yes, there are financial implications, there's some policy requirements as well, things that we need to consider. But first, let's have an open mind to a new idea, and let's take that forward. So we're encouraged by that, and we look forward to that advancing. As well, at a, within our staff meetings, we speak about what you do matters amongst the staff. It's where we want to recognize that customer service is important, how you deliver that as a staff person is key. We want to increase the level of customer interaction and the quality of work that we provide as a department. So I think we're, you will hear more about that through our, I know you will hear more about that through our directors, who will provide update now, and some more specifics around their 2019 business plan. So I'll cue it off with Jim, if we're ready to go here now.
Thanks, Mark. Greetings to Mayor, members of council. I'm most pleased and proud to present to you the Community Programming and Outreach Services Plans for 2019. Our team champions a variety of recreation, leisure, programs, as well as services, that strive to improve the lives of our residents, students, and visitors to Waterloo. This team of dedicated staff focuses on community well-being, ensuring our services are inspiring, responsible, and relevant to the community. Our commitment is focused on community well-being, and building opportunities that contribute to a strong and vibrant quality of life for all residents. Our team works alongside all departments, and many, many, many groups and organizations in the community. Our key initiative, do I push this one? Page down? First initiative would go here.
This, this gives you, this gives you some flexibility now.
Well, that's Environment and Parks. I got it here, but that's okay. Our key initiatives for 2019 are listed on this slide. And the important aspect of this initiative, as Mark mentioned, is to explore. And this has become part of our culture as we advance the neighborhood strategy, further promote and advance programming at the City of Waterloo Museum, and develop the city's older adult recreation strategy. The next slide then would go, in the, in the, in the plan for 2019, on the menu list, it identifies a permanent staff position for a neighborhood development coordinator as part of the neighborhood strategy that was approved by council in 2018. This position calls for an expanded role and scope to support resident-led community building for all neighborhoods. By building strong and safe neighborhoods, we are building a strong, interactive community. A strong community means a strong city. Council approved a contract for staffing in 2018 for a two-year period to begin the implementation and development of the neighborhood strategy itself. So far, we've witnessed and had some, many successes, which include the interaction with the school boards on community use of schools, development of micro grants, review enhancement of the matching fund program for neighborhoods, and future plans include Neighborhood Summit and Neighborhood Leaders Committee. To ensure the neighborhood strategy can be implemented, and resources are sustainable and stable, it is our hope that this position can be implemented in 2019 budget. The City of Waterloo Museum, located at Carl Stogge Mall, which I believe most of you have visited, continues to grow and places an emphasis on programming of our rich heritage. The direction of the museum's strategy is to enhance the programming and further advance exhibitions that will integrate our heritage into community life. The investment noted in the business plan will influence staff's ability to implement this strategy to areas of exhibitions and programs. Heritage programming teaches us who we are, contributes to our community well-being, and enriches the experiences of visitors to our museum. Last year alone, we saw increases to visitor numbers, or foot traffic, as we call them, of 7,398. This represents a 40% increase from the previous year. The City of Waterloo Museum is on the move and growing. This investment, as noted in the business plan, can be designed to grow into a modest and cost-recovery model for the future. In our budget paper, you all see a menu item listed as community grants, community cash grants, which is administered by our team. As our community continues to grow and becomes more diverse, the amount of funding requests continues to rise. The disparity between funding available in the budget of $68,000, and requests totaling $219,000, means an increase in operational funding by $100,000 would benefit more groups receiving more funding, and more appropriate levels of funding to successful applicants. Community Program and Outreach is a proud and community-minded team that makes every effort to connect individuals, neighborhoods, community organizations, so that they will help us build capacity and encourage public engagement and participation. And that's our team.
Our apologies, we're waiting for, on USB, the presentation USB stick, for whatever reason, it didn't upload correctly. So if we want to continue on until we bring in the USB stick, then we could proceed.
I can, survey number 11.
Survey number 11. Thank you, Jim. So Mayor Jaworski, members of council, City of Waterloo staff team, member of the public. Since I don't, since I don't have slides with me, if council does have their business plan books, Recreation Services is on page, starts on page 33. So my name is Steve Heldman, I am the Director of Recreation Services. It is a privilege for our team to serve the city in a capacity that contributes to overall health and wellness, identity, and sense of community. Our team builds community through active engagement, and for those of you who were at our open house last Thursday, might have seen a little taste of that. "We develop and promote programs, facilities, and spaces for recreation and community activities for all citizens. We strive to surpass customer expectations and ensure effective management of facilities. The strength of our team at all levels enables us to optimize the resources we have, and reinvest them for continued success. So our 2019 work plan will include, but certainly not be limited to, the continued support of our Facility Design and Management Services Team, led by Sunda, in the advancement of the detailed design related to an expanded WMRC, and hopefully will provide a little support on the side in regards to the new East Side Library. Pending council endorsement of the related construction, the development of an operating plan that supports expanded multi-generational recreational opportunities at WMRC, addressing, addressing growth in the core, as well as the broader community. In parallel, we will be exploring options to expand program opportunities to meet the varied interests of the community, including integration of new opportunities at an expanded WMRC. And as committed, as part of previous reporting, our goal is to rationalize operations and build program with no long-term financial impact to the current operating budget. We also plan to develop aquatic and mediumroom guidelines that support allocation policies that guide access to our facilities, building on the ICE allocation guidelines completed and approved by council two, two years ago. So on behalf of the entire division, I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide this very brief overview, and certainly would entertain any questions, if you have any."
Thank you very much, Steve. I think we're gonna, we're gonna continue, we'll come back and loop back with each director at the end.
So with that, I will introduce Jeff Silcox Childs, our Director of Environment and Parks.
Are you good with the free format?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you, Steve. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I am, as Steve mentioned, Jeffrey Silcox Childs. I'm the Director of Environment and Parks Division for the city. It's my pleasure to be here today to present to you our business plan and our 2019 key initiatives. Environment and Parks is responsible for providing a number of services, a very wide number of services, including managing and maintaining parks and open space, trails, sports fields, cemeteries, the urban forest. And more recently, we also share responsibility with IPPW for the provision of park development and capital project implementation. All of this work is done with the dedication and professionalism of our team members and our frontline staff. And I have a couple of members I'd like to introduce to you today. I have with me, they're still here? Yep, they are. Jeff Fortune, you can just raise your hand. Jeff Fortune, Manager of Parks Operations, Turf Construction and Playgrounds. Therese Linsman, Manager of Parks Operations, Sports and Outdoor Programming. Rebecca Zinger, Inter-Manager of Cemetery Services. And Tim Wolfe, last but not least, Manager of Forestry and Horticulture. And I should mention to council, this is a very busy group. And given the weather today, they're very anxious to get back out there. And so if you see them pop up and leave, don't be offended, and I will try not to be offended, either.
Given the temperatures today, I think they're pretty much okay right here.
I think they're warm, definitely warm. Okay, together we provide valued services and opportunities for passive and active recreation throughout the city. And if I can use some words that my commissioner used previously that I didn't know was in your talk previously, so I had to change mine. What we do matters. The things we do matter, and the things that we do are very evident to the residents and, and visitors of Waterloo. Some of our recent successes include the Parkview Cemetery Expansion, the Waterloo Park Central Promenade and Pedestrian Bridge, and the Central Street Entrance. And as well, the Mary Allen Park Expansion that was just opened in the summer of last year. That's where I've normally switched the slide. Our key initiatives for 2019 include the Citywide Parkland Strategy, commenced in 2018 with a comprehensive public engagement process. The strategy will define the role and function of our park systems over the next 10 to 20 years. And ideally, and it will, meet the needs of a diversifying and growing community. The strategy will also align with a number of other planning documents, which together support the goals of the city's overarching strategic plan. Staff will be coming to council in the second quarter of this year with a draft of the strategy. And shortly thereafter, another public engagement process and consultation will take place. And we are looking to finalize this key strategic document for us this year in 2019. Our second key initiative, which might be coming up, is the Waterloo Park Master Plan Implementation. Considered the jewel of the city, in 2018 Waterloo Park celebrated its 125th anniversary. That's the anniversary of the opening of the park, not the acquisition of the lands. There was some confusion last year. The Master Plan, which was completed in 2009, guides the short and long-term development, which takes place in the park, with the ultimate goal of rejuvenating this flagship park to meet the growing, growingly diverse community and intensifying community. The Master Plan has made some great advances over the past years, which have included the installation of the Father David Bauer Drive Frontage, the Central Promenade and Pedestrian Bridge, and the Central Street Entrance. Master Plan priorities are reviewed regularly, and take into consideration a number of different factors, including infrastructure renewal, funding opportunities, and alignment with other advancing projects. With the input and guidance of the Waterloo Park Advisory Committee, the Master Plan priorities for 2019 include the Silver Lake Frontage Reconstruction, a new splash pad on the west side of the park, wayfinding signage, road resurfacing, and if resources permit, we will initiate the preliminary design work for the Urban Caroline and the Stregram LRT entrances. And lastly, our third key initiative for 2019 is the Northdale Parquetts Project. Within the rapidly intensifying Northdale neighborhood, these two new park sites will provide much-needed park amenity to this community. To date, seven residential properties have been acquired, and demolition has taken place in preparation for those two new park sites. The RFP is currently out now for these two sites. And the public engagement process and design process will commence this year, 2019, followed by construction in 2020. The parquetts represent a much more urban park typology in comparison to our more typical suburban model that you've, that we've seen in the past. And as such, through a comprehensive public engagement process, we'll specifically be looking at high-quality materials, durable materials, lighting, and passive park amenities which meet the needs of this unique community. And with that, I'll pass the podium on to Sunda.
Thank you, Jeff. Good afternoon, Mayor, and the members of council. I don't think that I have that kind of exciting news to share, but my area of business is somewhat behind the scene with brick and mortar. So I'm going to explain the division that, that I am responsible, or our staff are responsible. Our, our, our goal is very simple. We would like to deliver safe and reliable operations of all the city buildings, facilities, in a fiscally responsible manner. Though our goal is very simple, which is safe operations of all the facilities in a fiscally responsible manner, our method to achieve the same varies widely, and it requires many different distinct skills that, in order to deliver that. We have experts, or the people have got structural, architectural, mechanical, electrical, and security systems that, in order to deliver a smooth operations of facility. How do we make sure that our division is delivering the smooth services? We have got a number of tools for which we measure. One is financial tool, a tool. The second one is an energy management. And the third one is security devices. So these are the tools and the methods we use to deliver these services. And how many staff behind the scene? Twenty-three FTE, approximately serving 1.3 million square foot floor area, which has an approximate replacement cost of $300 million. Our operating budget, including all utilities, costs, and revenue from property lease comes around $8 million. And 10-year project, capital project delivery is in the range of $70 million, including other facilities such as East Side Library, Rec Complex, Library Main Facilities, Carnegie Library. All these things are not part of our budget, but we are delivering that, and we are responsible for that. So in order to show a few projects, we have, there are three projects that we have put on the screen, although there are many behind the scene. So Waterloo Memorial Complex, we had an excellent open house last week, significant input coming from public, and... input coming from public, and then the other one is green building implementation policy. This is something, an initiative that we have undertaken last year in order to make sure that we will make significant reduction, 80% reduction, of energy cost in, over the next 40 years. That's a commitment we have made, and, which is approved by council. So that's another new work plan that we will be launching from this year onwards for the next quite number of years. And the third one is an assessment of City Hall Building and building condition renovation. So presently, we are assessing the condition of City Hall. The City Hall Building is at the right location in order for us to make sure that the value and the opportunity for us to attract more tenants in here. However, the present conditions may not be that conducive, so we are trying to make sure that conditions of the building and the appearance of the building will be more suitable for the upcoming trend and for the LRT opportunities. Finally, I'd like to place a request to the council that senior project engineer, mechanical, this is in the menu item, this is not approved, this is not a council, CMT approved item, this is a menu item. However, the importance of this mechanical engineer, I would like to bring it to your attention. If I say it in two words or in a very brief way, this is the only professional area that we currently, that the city doesn't have a professional designated person. All the other areas, all the other key areas we have has some level of professional support. This is the only area we do not have, and this is probably the very crucial area as the facility's demographic trend changes. We have, most of our facilities are in the range of 30 to 20 to 40 years span. Approximately, we, we are having 120 in clusters type of buildings, not counting the five large buildings. There are several small sheds and clusters that we have. All these ones has got a, is like if I put an analogy, it's at the middle age and which needs higher health care, which is same as in the building, and primarily the highest care coming from the mechanical side, and that's the intent of this position, to support in-house so that the historical information and the mentoring part to the workers will also be retained if we have an in-house expert. At this point, I turn it over to Chief Haptich to make his presentation.
On behalf of the Community Services and the Fire Rescue Services, it's my privilege to present Fire Rescue Services Business Plan and Key Initiatives for 2019. Like some of my peers, I'm joined by Deputy Fire Chiefs Ryan Schubert and Mike Dare this afternoon. So with that said, Fire Rescue Services is a team of highly skilled and caring professionals who provide essential community-based education, prevention and emergency response services that enhance public safety and quality of life in the city of Waterloo and beyond with our automatic aid agreements, of course, as well. With respect to services that we provide to expand upon those, we really, you know, focus on the prevention piece and public education. Like any good safety program, our, our goal is to provide that education to limit risk and educate people. This includes visits to local schools, to the universities as well, and on a regular basis. We also consult with extended members of the public, individuals and families, private companies and business owners, and visitors to the city of Waterloo. We also expand safety standards and Ontario Fire Code Enforcement by conducting inspections, fire safety plan reviews, and consultation to the public. Our aim is to have compliance through education so that we don't have to enforce the fire code, but we also are prepared to do that as well. The last part of what we do essentially is emergency response, and again, provide public education also at incidents. We take advantage of the opportunity, if there is an incident as appropriate, to educate the public at a critical time. What I'm really referring to is the three lines of defense, and that is to provide education, ensure fire code enforcement, because the last thing we want to do is respond to an emergency or incident because those systems had either failed or not been followed. With respect to, oh, pardon me, with respect to our key initiatives, they really are the essence of our mandate, and that is to shape a fire-safe community. It is my hope that ahead of sharing each one of those initiatives that you see and realize that they are very much connected and are informing one another. With the first being the advancement and integration of software and technology. Two major projects that are happening in the region of Waterloo with area fire services and police services as well include a voice radio project. So at this point, we are in receipt of user gear, which is the radios, the portable radios and mobile radios, and transitioning to a place of a digital system that will create efficiencies and effectiveness with communication. Interoperability is a key word. We're writing different processes and procedures to change the channels for voice radios that they're synonymous across the region, and working together collaboratively with our fire service partners and police as well. The other piece to that is the Consolidated Dispatch Project, which has also been advancing for the last couple of years. At this point, it's advancing to a technological interfacing between Waterloo Regional Police as a public safety answering point, fire services dispatch, and that those systems move quicker through technology, and also opportunity for streamlined records management and enhancement of fire service and responder safety that they can communicate with one another. The next key initiative is strategic planning and fire master plan development. This project will result in a more efficient and effective fire service to improve the quality of life for citizens and visitors within the city of Waterloo, also enhance a level of safety for firefighters in their effort to respond. This particular project will look at risk, it will look at different categories of risk with the opportunity to look at where we want to head in the future with fire services. We have conducted a great deal of work ahead of this proposed review for council by way of accreditation process that we're going under. We're conducting a fire underwriter survey review at this time, the regional projects that I've just shared with you, looking at call types, changing risk, and our changing community, namely, vertical response and high-rise and other challenges of response as our community advances. The third key initiative is fire station optimization. This particular project will look at the long-term plan for fire services. It talks about optimization, it also could mean relocation, it could mean a new fire station that's brought forward to, to recommend to council, as we look strategically to meet council's five-minute mandate for the first in-unit to respond if there is a set emergency. We have advanced technology, pre-alerting software, which means once a call is received at the public safety answering point through police to fire dispatch, once that call comes in and shows up on the screen of a dispatcher, for certain calls, we get an alert already at the fire station. So before we even know that what the call is, our crews are moving to the vehicle and get the information as they transition onto the truck for a 10 to, or 12 to 15-second overall response time enhancement capacity. So we're looking inward, that will inform that particular review of our fire stations and so forth. We also have the option to reoccupy a fire station on West Mount Road as you enter Waterloo Park. So it will be a comprehensive study informed by a number of particular projects, again, in alignment with looking at changing risk in the community. With respect to a budget menu item, we are looking at advancing, advanced medical oversight training in three key areas, one being defibrillation, the other area being the use of naloxone and epinephrine, and the naloxone piece is to address the opioid crisis in our community. This particular project that we're looking to advance will really address medical oversight and the need for care control and quality improvement in those three key areas, also known as the Delegated Medical Act, requiring oversight by a physician's license. We are proposing minimal percent in the total tax increase for 2019 of $10,000. What that, we hope, will advance is the training of frontline staff by way of our firefighters to equip them with the training to deliver in those three key areas, and as well, in a budget paper will come forward, if not approved, for an additional $10,000 in the next budget process, where we would look to educate the remainder of our senior staff and officers so that all staff are trained in these key areas. It's important to note that we are currently and have been delivering the Delegated Act of Defibrillation for almost 20, 20-plus years now. It's these oversight areas that we're looking to put together in one place for quality improvement and care control of the delegated acts. With that, I will look forward to any questions you may have as the conversation continues, and I turn it over to Municipal Enforcement, Shmire Mehta, and Christopher Mulhern. Thank you.
I was supposed to be up here together with Shmire, but I decided, I guess he's decided to, yeah, we're, it's gonna take the two of us. Yeah, he did try accountability, I held him accountable for that one. It takes two of us to present for Shane, I know. If we get on each other's, I think we could be the same height. So we're from Municipal Enforcement Services, and our motto and our presentation is built around we build community, protecting the quality of life, promoting and maintaining a community standard through education, mediation, and enforcement. Enforcement is always the last piece of that puzzle, and our job is to mediate and educate beforehand. The services we offer are education, mediation, community-focused review, risk mitigation, and again, mediation and enforcement. We have some key successes over the past five years, including the Residential Licensing Program under, under Shmire, the Comprehensive Business Licensing Program again, under Shmire's team, and we collaborated with our stakeholders at various levels to develop and implement a comprehensive operations plan in relation to large-scale events such as the sanctioned and unsanctioned events that we have in our city. The public engagement piece that we're committed to with our stakeholders through the residential licensing and comprehensive business licensing, we've had a number of key successes and process improvements through, throughout that public engagement piece. Our three key initiatives for 2019, I think I have to, I have to do it? Yes. Okay. First being the implementation, implementation improvements to the city's parking enforcement technology framework. Our framework is, is looking at becoming more robust, and our software upgrades will support our transition to the administrative monetary penalty system that council will hear about more in April. We're developing a complaints tracking system, which will more adequately reflect the, the reports and trends within our communities, and the transition to phone, smartphone technology. It's an upgrade to our existing handheld system. There's significant savings of not having to purchase additional devices and utilizing our current devices themselves. The second piece is for improved the animal control program itself, where we'll be looking at negotiating a new long-term contract with the Humane Society and develop, identify the feasible service level improvements and efficiencies as a part of that process. We'll bring forth recommendations to existing dog designation bylaw and the hearing process, and the, again, the amendments were in the fall of 2018 that we brought forth to shore up some of the short-term improvements before undertaking a full review. And the final piece under the animal control would be the strengthening of the relationship between the city and our Kitchener Humane Society officers with additional training, and, and to create a more cohesive and collaborative operation themselves. And then our third will be under Shmire's. I introduce Shmire Mehta.
Thanks, Chris. Good afternoon, Mayor Jaworski, members of council. So I'll speak on the third item. We've, due to the number of vacant building concerns that are being brought to Municipal Enforcement Services, this year will be, we will be working with cross-divisional teams to address various competing processes and to explore best practices when we, when we are called out to deal with various complex issues related to vacant buildings. Throughout the review, staff will aim to balance the impact of boarded-up or vacant houses in the neighborhood with, and trying to align that and also balance it with the neighborhood aesthetics, and, and try our best through the review process to maintain the neighborhood characteristics. Through this process, staff will also review barriers or incentives to encourage redevelopment at vacant properties, so that'll be throughout 2019. And the other initiatives we've identified here, if resources become available, are a Parks Patrol, expanding our Parks Patrol and our seasonal snow and ice, as well as longweeds and grass enforcement or inspection program. Again, just trying to meet community expectations by increasing resources and identifying opportunities to improve processes, so. Looking forward to any questions you may have, but that's our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience, council. As we've worked through that presentation, hopefully, you've also demonstrated some nimbleness and ability to go with things when they don't work our way at times, so we thank you for that. We're willing to take on some questions at this time, and I'll help facilitate that.
Well, thank you, Mark. I guess, I guess we don't have to invite Mr. Bowman back up so we can actually see his part of the presentation, do we? Good. Good. Questions for staff? Council Freeman first.
Through you, Mayor Jaworski. I have ones on different departments. Do you want me to ask them one after the other? So I wanted to echo the comments that Shmire made at the end of his presentation with regard to meeting community expectations and how difficult that is, and so I'm looking forward to seeing what suggestions that you have on that cross-department group to deal with not only the abandoned homes, but also these issues that seem to be arising with regard to use of houses for Airbnbs throughout the city.
Through you, Mayor Jaworski, to Council Freeman. Yes, we, all the points you just made will be, or are already being considered throughout the review, through the review process.
My next set of questions deal with fire rescue. So I guess more broadly, I'm hoping that as the fire master plan unfolds, that, that there'll be opportunity to kind of sharpen our pencil with regard to some of the, the capital forecast so that we're looking at the impact to the, the tax assessment growth. Like I know that your, your numbers include land acquisition, new trucks, new people, and all those pieces, but it, you know, kind of in the ballpark, it seems like most stations are being built around the 400, or sorry, the $4 million mark with like a two-bay or a three-bay station, so I'm just hoping that, that some of those numbers will become lower after the fire master plan, if that makes sense.
It certainly does. Through you, Mayor Jaworski, Council Freeman, thank you for your inputs. I assure you that this particular process will consider all decisions in contrast to funds and need in the community. We do have a number of options to explore. This is the first time in my experience where we are going through a land acquisition, we may go through a land acquisition process. We also have land and a resource on the west side, as I mentioned in the business plan presentation as well. At this point, the work completed has been done with the asset management plan and that the asset management review, but of course, going forward as we, we work towards these different initiatives, we will look at the, the greatest benefit for the, the value to the citizens and ensure a fire-safe community.
And then I had a question. And then I had a question with regard to the consolidated dispatch. So is that capital number for 20, like the number that's in here for 2019, is that a number that's being paid by all municipalities, so that's our contributing share, or how does that work?
Through you, Mayor Jaworski, Councilman Freeman. That is what is in our budget, or currently in our budget, and that amount is earmarked for the City of Waterloo for what would be our share of that particular project. At this point, where the project is at, it's focused on technology and records management. I do expect there to be an opportunity for savings in that regard, where we would be looking at offsetting costs of operating, potential costs of operating, in contrast to upfront costs that are capital-based.
My next question is related to facility design and management services, and it's just a simple question. I just was surprised to see item number G4. It's a really small amount, but it's with regard to the conveyor for the salt shed, because the salt shed's so new. Did we just overlook that conveyor, or did that just come online as a need? It's item G4. It's really, it's not much money. I just was a bit surprised to see it. It's on the expenses side on the operating review, and I think it's a conveyor for the salt shed.
Yes, yeah. So, we have received another $50,000 already in the previous year, so it's actually $100,000. So this year, so it comes in two parts. So we have already got $50,000, so this is another $50,000, so $100,000 is what, yeah.
So I gather then this was something that was planned for, and then we were just doing it over two operating cycles before we could install it?
That's correct, because we anticipate that the new structure will not absorb the entire maintenance dollars in the first year itself, so we were doing it in two stages.
So my next set of questions are for environment and parks. And I just, I wanted to say that I think you're right. I think the things your team does do matter, and the citizens really see it. And so I just, I wanted to point out that I, you know, I support what you're, the direction that you're headed with regard to the grass cutting and the outdoor maintenance, but I am hopeful, can the city take on a communications strategy around that, so that people understand that we're not growing weeds, we're growing spaces for butterflies?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the councilor. First of all, thank you for that comment. Much appreciated. Through the Parkland Strategy that I mentioned earlier, a component within that strategy is going to speak directly to naturalization. And naturalization, if I can, the message I would like to get out there is, naturalization is not simply walking away from something. Naturalization is a strategic approach. It may reduce maintenance costs initially, but there's a lot of thought behind it, and without that, you're going to get those invasive species and those weed concerns. There's definitely a communication aspect to that, and the strategy will guide us in the right direction on that.
And I think the only other piece was, I was really surprised to see that there was more money in the capital budget for yet more money at Mary Allen Park, so I just was like blown away by that. And I think it's becoming one of the most expensive urban parks that we own. And the other piece was with regard to funding the outdoor sports parks. Like, I really think that when we balance needs, like, we just put a million dollars into Mary Allen Park, and we need these active skateboard parks on the West Side and the East Side, and I'm just really hopeful that we can really start looking at balancing some of our expenditures more broadly throughout the whole city where parks investments are concerned. Because the Waterloo Park Master Plan is going to be another enormous amount of money in the Uptown. And I guess one of the things that continues, that I continue to struggle with, is that if you look demographically at the city, based on Stats Can, and where we have the majority of children under the age of 15, they aren't in the Uptown. And that really worries me. So I'm just putting that out there, but thank you so much. And I want to say that your team has been incredibly responsive to all the stuff, and certainly in my word, over the last term of council, and I want to thank you, and I'm confident it's happening everywhere. So thank you very much for that. So my next set of questions are on the community programming and outreach. So, Mr. Bowman, thank you. So, one of the pieces that I'm looking at here, and I, you know, I value the work that we do as a city with regard to caring for our built heritage and caring for our heritage resources. But I really, I'm really struggling with the money being allocated to a collection storage when we know we need an elevator for the Button Factory. And I'm just trying to balance that need, and I'm really hopeful you guys can go back and look at this as a staff team, because the, you know, and thinking about how long can the collection storage be pushed off? Is there another location for it? But I look at that number, and I just feel really confident that we could make some very significant changes at the Button Factory and better support our broader community.
Well, let's go back and look at some of our other capital projects. The reason we put it in the budget for capital expenditures is because we're running out of space, and more people are donating or giving us items than we want us to continue to have. And so we have lost some of our storage space based on the fire that occurred last year this time, and of course, our truck is a very large piece of our equipment. So that's why we're trying to be proactive in thinking ahead as to some of the items that we have in our collection.
Commissioner Dykstra also has something.
Oh, sorry.
To assist council with the discussion about the Button Factory and priorities, the team under Cindy's lead facilities, design, and management, we're going to see if we can, under some current project funds, advance the design work for the Button Factory elevator, and then with through the 2020-2022 budget, come back and aim to move that forward and get a more aggressive plan to assist with that. And some of the, we think with the project details in the Button Factory, they're more for a comprehensive allocation for accessibility needs with those dollars, and we want to focus in and look at the elevator more specifically to address that issue and work with council to move that along in earlier years.
And maybe, Mr. Dykstra, you're well positioned to answer this question. It's just with regard to the studies that are identified under Mr. Bowman's budget for the engagement strategy, and I'm just trying to understand how, like, how success would be measured with regard to that allocation of resource.
I'll take the first kick at the can here, and Jim Ken, he's provided some additional notes. So just to support that program, you know, the allocation is twofold, training and then also implementation too, and I'll let him speak to successes and some other points on that.
When we were advised of the opportunity to have participatory budgeting, we engaged a number of departments to discuss how that could unravel. And at the end of the day, it was felt that it would lend or be more of a neighborhood-coordinated adventure initiative, and the $100,000 would be, for the first year, would be initiated for training. What we have found at other communities who have done this type of a project did not have submission information for us, and it was basically a lot of unknowns. And so in order to facilitate and get more of involvement from the community, we wanted to put this forward as a training for both our, all of our staff to engage the public in terms of small projects, like maybe in a park, maybe in something more larger in an area that the community wants to see happen. That's the roots of where we started with this, and because our neighborhood strategy was still fresh and new, we decided this would be a good area for us to have that capital investment. And so how we would measure it would be measuring how staff would be trained in it, so they could engage the community in a more effective way, because right now, a lot of people did not understand what it was about, nor did we have sufficient evidence to tell us how we could track it effectively, and we hope to do that through that initiative.
Further questions, Councilor Beeth?
Through you, Mayor Jaworski. Thank you. And I would follow up kind of on some of Councilman Freeman's comments about, and Commissioner Dykstra has addressed the Button Factory elevator. Sorry, I don't feel very well today. It's tough. Yeah, that can't be put off till 2028, so I'm looking forward to report back for the next round. But I want to talk about, and also, Councilman Freeman's comments about the parks. Heasley Park, Albert McCormick area has been like the poor cousin for a long time. Really, we need lighting over there, we need benches. It's so hard to find a bench in this community to, for, along the trails and at McCormick, and the outdoor activity space. And I just, I see, you know, the Mary Allen and the Alexandra Parks coming on board, well, the Alexandra one coming on board this year, 2019, 2020, and I really, we don't need, we don't need to spend a ton of money in Heasley Park and the McCormick area, but we really need some updates. We have young people over there that are at risk. And the other thing I'd like to put on the radar of staff too, is McCormick has a kitchen in the back of that space, and I know it's in rough shape, but I know that the community that rents, when the community rents out the community room and they see that, I've had people approach me, that it's really a disaster. So, and I know that there's lots of programs, that there's other community partners maybe that would love to have kitchen space and prep space and that kind of thing. It's a big thing these days. So if we can get Albert McCormick, you know, even, I know we're working on the tennis courts there to get pickleball and basketball for the kids, that would be so awesome for the West Ward 3. So, thank you for everything, and I appreciate all the work you do and the tight budgets, but yeah, I think it's time for some money to be spent on the other end of town. So, thank you.
Through you, Mayor Beeth. Thank you for the comments. We will take those away and work on that, even this week. The managers for that facility and the parks around, just to kickstart some discussion on opportunities there and some visioning and brainstorming based on what we're hearing from public and council at this time.
Great. Thank you, Councilor Bodley, and then Councilor Vasek.
Through you, Mayor Jaworski. First question is for enforcement. It is around Budget Item B21, the expense reduction in municipal enforcement, I believe is associated with legal fees. I'm just trying to get an understanding of practically how this is going to impact the ability to operate.
Through you, Mayor Jaworski, to Councilor Bodley. The council funding piece was, we're reducing $20,000 for prosecution services as it was for external prosecution, but those services are provided in-house at this point, so we no longer require that funding through inefficiency.
Wonder. Next question, sorry. Pardon me?
Go ahead.
Sorry, thank you. Through you, Mayor Jaworski, this is for environment and parks. And Councilman Freeman touched on this, but I'm just trying to get, maybe this can be early stages of your communication strategy on the naturalization piece. Just trying to understand some of the types of locations that we're talking about implementing this strategy, just to kind of get an understanding of what that's going to look like.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the councilor. The naturalization strategy has actually been implemented for quite some time. The areas that we're moving into this year are tying closely in with our recently achieved B-City designation. So we have just set up our working group, and they will be meeting for the first time, actually in a couple weeks, beginning of February. And they will be selecting the sites, they're planning on doing five this year. And predominantly, they're going to pick locations that are either parkland or open space, where naturalization efforts are not necessarily going to impede use of the regular park users, and not necessarily impede use or views of adjacent property owners. So there's a lot of consideration that goes into those specific locations.
Thank you, and again, through you, Mayor Jaworski, just to follow up on that, just throughout the campaign, I received some commentary about maintenance of medians, and so that was kind of where my comment was going, to ensure that it wasn't along those areas of the city, and whether or not we have appropriate funds to be able to maintain medians to an appropriate community standard.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, again to the councilor. Medians are definitely a challenge, and they have been since legislation changed and since we no longer have access to herbicides. Not that that's a good thing, but it certainly made it a heck of a lot easier. So are, the best way for us to maintain, you're speaking of paved medians, I'm assuming? Hard surface?
Yeah. Beans and tall, and even grass.
Right, right. So you'll notice in a number of different locations throughout the city where the medians had been planted fairly extensively with shrubs and that kind of thing, shrubs and herbaceous material mostly. We've actually started cutting back those areas. It's very, very challenging for city staff to maintain center medians. It's challenging for de-icing salts, it's challenging, because of de-icing salts. It's also challenging because of the location. It's very, very dangerous in some locations for staff to be in those locations. And if, I like to put it towards people in this way, I say, think about your kids, your nieces, your nephews, would you want to put them in an orange vest and put them on a median to maintain those areas? And that's the decision I face daily throughout the summer. So we've been cutting back on those areas and switching them back over either to hard surface paving, or more likely to grass. Grass is much quicker and easier for us to maintain in those specific locations. The other thing that we tend to do is we'll try and do our maintenance on the hard surface medians at the least impact time with traffic, which often means that we have a bit of a conflict with bylaw. But we work very closely with them, because it's a lot safer for us to do this in the evening, when there's very few cars out there, or in the very, very early morning hours. We tend to get a couple complaints, but once we speak to the people and explain why we're doing that, it doesn't tend to be an issue at all.
Thank you, and one more question for you, through you, Mayor Jaworski, is around S10 Parks General Service Level reductions. I just noticed, I wanted some feedback on a couple of lines that were in there regarding what maybe the practical impact from your perspective would be regarding the vandalism and graffiti reduction, as well as the tree planting reduction. Just some comments about how those funds were decided upon.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the councilor. The process that we went through was essentially trying to find efficiencies and trying to find funding, and also the opportunity to true up some budget lines as well. So it's a combination of all of those things. Specific to the graffiti, looking at past actuals, if the monies weren't being spent from those accounts, but was being spent from another account, it made sense to keep using that other account, and this is simply just a truing up of the budget. For other areas like tree planting, I'm not certain, I may have to come back to you on that one. Most of our tree planting is through capital. that one, most of our tree planting is through capital and wouldn't, wouldn't be impacted.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just, survey has a common understanding of true up, I might ask either Filipe or Cashware to just explain what truing up a budget is, because that was something I found when I started here, it was a sort of a, a new terminology for me.
Through you, Mayor Jaworski, to the counselor. We, as part of developing the budget, we take a look at what the actuals are and compare them to budget, and where there are variances that are persistent and have been there for a long time, and they are practical to incorporate. So if we persistently have shortfalls in the expenditure, we would true it up, meaning that we would increase the budget to get it to where the actuals are so that we don't constantly have those deficits. On the revenue side, if you have persistently higher revenues, and we expect that it is sustainable, we would true up the budget and bring it up to the revenue level where we see the actuals tracking, so that's basically what we do, and it's part of our budget development that we look at our historical actuals.
A much better definition than I could ever give. Next up.
Council Bodley, Council Vasek, Council Bonagor.
Sorry. This one, I think, is for Commissioner Dijkstra, actually. So this is, just some, some questions regarding the capital budget and as pertains to Westside recreational facility needs. There's a few capital budget line items in there, 213, 214, 253, and 219, and I'm just trying to understand how, I guess, the process works there. I see in 2019, we have land acquisition funding, and so that leads me to question whether we've identified lands firstly, and then I see in 2022, a study being proposed with further capital funds out, I think, in 2028. So I'm just, I'm trying to understand how the process works there, and when those funds might actually be spent.
Through the mayor, to Counselor Bodley. Great questions on that, and you've identified the process, understand the land and what's available on the west side for land, undertake the study to confirm the need associated with that facility, see if there's opportunity around indoor, outdoor, what are those opportunities, and assess that, then focus on the needs of that structure and start to visualize that and build it and move that forward. So where we are in the process, we are looking for land options across the city, and we are actively competing for that and looking for options, and it's on my to-do list on a regular basis to see if there's opportunities, work with other staff to see if something's available, see if it fits what we envision as an opportunity, and see if we can capture that at the right moment. So we will continue to work in that regard and report back to council as needed.
So just to follow up that, to that, through you, Mayor Jaworski, so, so do we have, we have a study in 2022, but we have something in mind right now for what we're looking at for land acquisition? Is that fair to, fair to say without having a full study about complete needs, I guess? Is that how it works?
Yeah, that's correct, so we, on the, on the outdoor side, we know there's a pressure for baseball, softball, those type of sports, we're trying to understand that. True up some of the numbers, again, within Jim Bowman's area to see where the groups are for this year and the last couple of years on that front, that'll inform. With our 2009 Recreation Master Plan at that point, identified twin pad or an additional rink for sort of the 20, the timeframe that you see in there, 20 years out from that time, so we're, we're thinking that that's one possible use, and we want to understand that, and we want to ensure that demographics, current needs, current trends align with some of those initial thoughts that we've identified in earlier plans.
Next up, Council Vasek, Council Bonagor.
Okay, through you, Mayor. Yeah, my question is around Commissioner Raff, the other week was talking about succession planning being a big thing they'll be working on in IPPW, so I guess I'm now curious about other departments, not just yours, but yours now, about what, is that a consideration in your department at all, and the connection to the budget? Is, I'm just wondering if the departments are talking about succession planning, because I imagine a lot of resources go into succession planning, and so how do the departments, well, first, is that even a concern in your department, and second, if it is, do you talk about that across departments, and what does that conversation look like?
Through the mayor, to you, Counselor Vasek, yes, definitely a concern within our department, and our stats are similar with HR in their business plan presentation noted that a large contingent of our city workforce has the opportunity to have another career opportunity in the future, that being retirement, and we are working collectively as all departments, CMT have this on a standing agenda, where we just want to understand what we're, where we're at, where we're going with that, what initiatives do we need to do. Specific to community services, we have developed some programs for employee development, trying to look at opportunities for mentoring, so if there's a manager, director you'd like to connect with, and see if there's some learnings you can get from that to enable you to apply for that job in the future, that's there. We're also looking at some secondment opportunities related to the work at WMRC, specific to the program needs. Steve noted in his work that he's doing some program review, we're going to second a position and use that to drive that program delivery review, but also at the same time, use that as a mentoring and a succession planning opportunity. So active on this amongst all the divisions, and they have plans that they're working through and thinking about.
Counselor Bonagor.
Thank you, through you, Chair Jaworski. I'm not entirely sure who I'm asking, but I've got some questions for you.
I'll help direct you there.
Before I launch into them though, may I also just say thank you to your department, and particularly thanks for your work on the Uptown Parks, the work that you've done and the work that is coming up. I mean, it's providing access to nature for a lot of the people who are being asked to bear the load of intensification, and that's deeply appreciated, and I really appreciate the fact that you're thinking of all ages when you're putting these parks together. So I think that's going to have us in very good stead as we move forward. Getting to some specifics, and apologies if I'm getting too deep in the weeds, I'm still learning the process. I noticed that item S7 is the transient site cleanup, there's a request for, I believe, $20,000 listed. I'm just wondering, do we have an equivalent amount of money dedicated to helping chronic homelessness? Or is, you know, how does, how does our, how costs towards transient site cleanup compare to what we're spending in trying to address chronic homelessness in Waterloo?
So I'll kick it off, there's, again, you see some directors ready to engage on this conversation, so that's, to your point, how does the crossover occur on an item like this? Yes, we need to do the practical point on the cleanup, which is a responsibility of Sunda's area, but then there's crossover with folks in Jim Bowman's area, and how do we assist, how do we support, how do we work then with folks related to municipal enforcement and policing, how do we pull them in? To really have that, you know, intertwined conversation, what's the root cause of that problem which we see, or that outcome which is a transient site, how do we deal with that beforehand? And so how do we deal with the folks that are involved with that site? How can we give them support? So we, we work with a number of these folks around the department to advance that. So hopefully that provides some insight on that, we are intertwined, and we do have a connection when we do that. This is the practical need, that money to deal with the actual cleanup and set that up, whereas Jim and others have funds that they're providing assistance for others in the community. Hopefully that answers a question, if not, I can get some more details from our staff.
That, that helps, thank you. Okay, moving on, and again, these aren't always necessarily big budget items, but I noticed that there's a line item for replacement of equipment at the adult rec complex and Wing 404, it's item 202. And I'm just wondering, given these locations are to be shut, is this equipment that we'll be taking with us, how much use are we going to be getting out of it?
So that, yes, thank you, through you, Mayor Jaworski, to Counselor Bonagor. We are, that was in the capital budget for quite some time, and so we are now looking at how to repurpose some of those dollars going forward in the new facility. So right now, we will not be spending money unless it's an actual need, like something breaks down, requires our immediate attention. We could have chairs, tables that, you know, break on us, we'll have to replace. So for the most part, we will be delivering that item based on the intent, the move that the council approves in the future of 2021.
On the topic of things that are happening with the ARC and 404, so switching to the rec complex, I noticed that the Bauer parking lot is slated for being paved. How does that timing fit in with the WMRC plans? Are we going to be without parking at both locations, or are these scheduled to be, to be done together? And how does it then fit into the Waterloo Park Master Plan?
I'll kick it off, Counselor Bonagor. So the goal is not to interfere with the timing, so construction on the WMRC site, we'll work with that, if there's, and make sure there's no conflict with the Bauer lot. If there's some staging that's needed, since it is gravel, we'll transition to another location. So a solid parking plan will be part of the plan moving forward. Strategically moving forward, that paved lot with the line painting on it will help us with parking demand, need, events, other activities that go on the rec, the reciprocal use on seasonality between the two facilities. We see between the park and the rec complex, some opportunity with that paving, but during the place to support the needs of the community.
I think that's me done, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Counselor Henry, and I have a couple of comments.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioner Dijkstra, to you and, and your team. I'll just leave this question out for you. I know it's not in anybody's work plan this year, but it is being dropped onto our work plan. This year will be the last day after, last time after 35 years that the University of Waterloo hosts massive Canada activities that are well enjoyed by the entire community and have been come, that they've looked forward to now for generations, and that's going to disappear after this year. Who's adding that to their work plan over, over this year so that we'll be ready for 2020? And I imagine we could have very detailed conversations about that in the future, but at the moment, I just want to know, with whom should I be having those detailed conversations with?
So through the mayor to Counselor Henry, that would be me, so I've, I've been assigned to have an initial look at that. We will work with CAO's office through the culture group to have a conversation about that, but at this point, I've had initial conversations, and we'll continue those with the university in the next week or two to understand the move forward path with some engagement, understanding, community thoughts. We've heard some, we want to formalize some move forward steps now, so those meetings are occurring shortly, and then we'll go from there. But if you have a question during now and then, I'd gladly connect with you on that.
So far, the best idea is to celebrate Canada on March 17th, to kill two birds with one stone. Make sure we have a good crowd.
Yeah, it, it, there is some evidence that Ezra Street is used to hosting large gatherings, I'm not sure 55,000 is the number and the trend we're looking for, but, well, it's the only other place in the city I'm aware of that we host 20,000 people in one place on a regular basis. So just, I'll look over at my Uptown Council to see if, if there's some coordination that we have to work on.
Is that, is that it? Okay. For me, some commentary to Commissioner, heard earlier about the really trimming around not only medians but pedestrian safety islands, to see if there's something that can be done there, although I do see it being very difficult to do on a safe, from a safe perspective, it isn't a thing that I hear about on a regular basis. On, one more thing. Oh, the other thing was, when, when would enforcement services properly plan for future reconsiderations or looking into bylaws like campfire bylaw? We'd bring that up as a discussion at council during the strategic plan, and then it'd be something for maybe in years 2, 3, 4?
Yes, Mayor, that would be a great way to bring forward the discussion, new ideas under municipal enforcement through the strategic plan, and then we can go from there.
Okay, and we'll see if council's interested in that. And then third is the vacant building effort. I'll, I think I'd signal to all of the commissioners and CAO that this is something that comes up again and again in the community, comes up again amongst council of buildings that sit there empty, and they're blight on the community, so taking a broad-based approach to even from communications, is there things we can do tax-wise, is there things to look at? Leave no stone unturned, and finding out ways of encouraging the boarded-up buildings to go away.
Yes, as Mr. Metta noted, it's multi-departmental review, and we'll engage in.
Feel free to come back to council if you like, and to ask questions as council, because I think this council has lots of opinions on those things.
We will do so.
And one more, Counselor Vasek, take us home.
Thanks. May I add to that, so, through you, Chair, I just wanted to, when you are leaving no stone unturned, I also just wanted to put in a suggestion to also consult with the arts community, because I don't, I don't even know if there's anything that's really creative that could be done with neighborhoods around, but I'd be curious to have that in the report as well.
Will do.
Thank you.
Great addition, I think with that, you and your team are off the hook, great team, thank you very much for bearing with us with lots of questions in this area, so thank you very much.
Our pleasure, we look forward to 2019 advancing.
Thank you. Where are we here? We are skipping to formal, considering notion, notice motion. To the clerk, at one point, we want to go to Counselor Bonagor regarding her, it's not a notice of motion, but she can bring it up, I guess we might as well bring it up now. Okay, I'll turn it over to Counselor Bonagor.
Through you, Chair Jaworski. Talking about Uptown, graffiti is an ongoing problem for Uptown businesses and residents, we see it on walls, fences, utility infrastructure, and more. The current removal process requires the affected party, be it the city or the region, the utility company, or the private property owner, to arrange for and ensure the removal of the graffiti. And there is some assistance for private property owners through the BIA, but overall, the approach has proven to be fairly slow and rather cumbersome. During a recent discussion between the BIA and the city, an idea was put forward to trial, an enhanced Uptown graffiti pilot. And the idea is it would be a proactive approach that would see a private company visit the Uptown BIA area weekly, and they would remove all low-rise graffiti, whether it's on public or private land. They would take a photo of it and send it to the police so it can be registered, but then they would deal with it each week. And the cost of the project in its entirety is $19,000 for one year. The BIA brought this up with the, that plan to fund 50% of the cost of the pilot. So I would like to move the motion.
First, you would, let's look for somebody to waive notice of motion, I'm sure there's keeners like Counselor Freeman and Counselor Beeth are interested in waiving notice of motion to hear more.
Okay, sorry, I'm still new to this, okay.
No, no, keep going.
So I'd like to move the motion that, that the city of Waterloo participate in the 2019 Uptown Waterloo BIA graffiti removal pilot at a cost of $9,500, which is 50% of the total cost, to be funded from the council's Community Contingency Reserve, subject to the confirmation of an adequate balance in the reserve by the CFO.
Okay, we have a motion on the table, somebody want to second it? Counselor Vasek does. And anybody want to speak to it? Counsel Beeth? And then Counsel Vasek.
Thank you. It's an interesting thing, but there, again, I talk about being the poor cousin, like, this is only for the Uptown. cousin, like, this is only for the Uptown. So why is there a hurry to run this through? Like, the waving notice of motion? And my other question is, how does this company, whoever it is, how do they find the graffiti? Does somebody phone it in, or are they running around every day looking for it? Or kind of a little more on the process?
So on the first topic, Councillor Bonagor and I participated with the Uptown BIA regular meeting with, between city and the BIA. And this is an opportunity that came about that, my understanding, my recollection, is that the company that does this is actually a local company, but they do it for other cities already. And so they approached the BIA, saying, you know, we could do this on a regular basis, where they actually look at it once a week, take a look at all the areas of town, and essentially scour them and clean them on a weekly basis without all the effort of, or all the red tape of all the way we do it currently of passing it around. And so it was really an opportunity that came to the board of the BIA, and I'll look at Councillor Bonagor to correct me if I'm wrong, and they would like to move forward with it, but they want to do it in partnership with the city. So this came about at the most recent meeting, and they're ready to move forward. They've already agreed to move forward, provided that we can come on board. So it was really, it's something that came up at the BIA board, that it's something they'd like to move forward with. And I'll turn it back to you, see if there's any correction. Correct. Okay, so my stuff is fair. Go ahead. Yeah.
Follow-up to that, what does our bylaw staff, what are their comments about this project?
They ran away. Oh, no, Chris is still here.
Chris?
I don't know if Chris was listening to that, because it wasn't, or Commissioner Dijkstra, or somebody, so.
Yes, through you, Mayor, to Councillor Veeth. Yes, Shane Turner has been engaged in the conversation with the BIA to understand processes. So from our end, how we get complaints and how we address them, and work them through the process, and also, you know, proactive, our officers out and seeing and identify them, they get that support versus trying to find the, you know, the official owner of the property, then call them, because there is some funding that the BIA puts towards this on a regular basis, trying to streamline process, as the mayor noted. Chris, anything else to add on that?
Through you, Mayor Jaworski, to Councillor Veeth. The significant challenges you'll have between Uptown and outside of the Uptown will be in relation to property ownership. We own some of that property that we maintain, and then it would be private ownership in a lot of cases. Parkland is taken care of by our park services, so they come in and use a similar company to abate the graffiti there. But on private land, fences and-- And in the Uptowns specifically, it was equally cumbersome, but it was more prolific. So a program like this would be very supportive on our staff as well. Instead of going after the owners, and you could be looking at 50, 60 owners, it would be abated, and thus you benefit from that. Outside of that ward, you're talking about, we would go to those 50 or 60 property owners outside of the ward, and it would be a lot easier to connect with them on a personal level and say, can you take care of this, rather than at corporate level?
Okay, so that frees our bylaw staff up to do lots of other--
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councillor Freeman.
That was a really helpful conversation, but this is a tricky piece, because, like, in Eastridge, for example, there's this saint that lives in Eastridge, and he personally goes and cleans all of the graffiti, all through the neighborhood, with his own supplies, his own, like, cleaning everything. And he does people's fences, all the city property, all the bell boxes, all the Rogers boxes. Like, I think, like, I don't know, like, maybe we need to start thinking about this from the neighborhood strategy perspective, and, you know, making those cleaning supplies and stuff available to people who are willing to do this. Honestly, this guy takes a picture of everything, he sends it to the police, he cleans it up, within like 24 hours of it happening, because it was just getting so pervasive on people's fences that surround our parklands. And again, like, if we looked at those fences as a shared property, because theoretically, they're on the property line, so they are shared with us, you know, this fellow's doing layman's work.
Oh, Councillor Bonagor, you want to comment, please?
Yeah, if I could respond to that, I think that would be a wonderful thing to look into as well, because this pilot only covers the Uptown BIA area. It doesn't cover a number of the neighborhoods in my ward that are also being affected, and there are residents who are very concerned as well. So I think the pilot gives us a good opportunity to at least have a look at how this process might work, but the idea of bringing some factor into the neighborhood strategy as well, I would really like to see what that discussion could bring up as well.
Sounds like a good item for strategic plan. Councillor Vasek, Councillor Bodley.
Yeah, through you, Mayor. Thanks, whoever. Oh, yeah, thanks for the motion. That's great. So, yeah, for sure graffiti is a huge issue throughout the community, not just in Uptown, of course, but, yeah, everywhere else. So I guess my question is, I'm wondering, because it's also a conversation that I think more of the community would like to be a part of, so I'm wondering how, like, what the best way is for that, so if--
Strategic plan. Strategic plan would be a good time for us to have a discussion on things we want to look at accomplishing in years two, three, and four.
Okay, and then would we need information ahead of that? So would we want to get some information from city staff about the process of graffiti removal? I mean, I've had lots of information, because I've gone back and forth with Chris multiple times, but he's been so helpful. Thank you.
It's like the vacant homes, a blight on the community, and it's something I think we all experience in every one of our neighborhoods. So I think it's something that, I think, just even, this is why I really want to have this conversation out here, so that the team here could hear our interest in that and tackling it somehow in the three-year plan. We'll see where that goes.
Thanks, thanks.
Councillor Bodley.
Through you, Mayor Jaworski. Perhaps maybe just some clarity on the area, like, how big of an area Uptown are we talking about exactly, I guess, or maybe not exactly?
Yeah, no, the BIA, the Uptown BIA is actually a definitive designated geographical area. I don't have the map with me, but you can kind of take from Sun Life to Ethels, probably Caroline, over to a bit of Regina, approximately. Yeah, go ahead.
So when we talk about this as a pilot project, given the, and maybe I'm wrong, maybe this is a question for Commissioner Dijkstra, but the funding that we're talking about here for such a small area, we're talking about this as a pilot project for Uptown, not to necessarily be taken out to the other neighborhoods. Is that--
You're absolutely, you're absolutely correct. So again, this is in partnership. We've been requested by the Uptown BIA that they want to run this, they want to trial it and to see how it goes for a year. So we'll get the experience of seeing that. We'll also get the value of a lot of our properties are in the Uptown as well, in the public realm. And as you know, that's sort of our area that we're on. But you are correct, that the Uptown BIA definition does spill over into certain streets where there's residences, much like our CIP, our Community Improvement Plan does. But that's part and parcel of the BIA definition. Further questions? Seeing none? Oh, Councillor Vasek, you went for move there.
I'm just curious about if there's an economic impact to removing graffiti, or leaving it on. So for the business owners, how does that, or does it impact their sales, or getting people to the Uptown? So I'm curious about some of those community and economic impacts.
I'm going to turn it over to Councillor Bonagor, because I have a lot of ideas, but I'm sure she does, too.
Well, I can speak to at least one thing, and that's the fact that the business owner become, or they are responsible for the removal. And I think a lot of our Uptown business owners, a lot of them are small independents, they're already stretched pretty thin, just keeping their businesses going and flourishing. So if we could remove this impetus, because currently, they would get, they would arrange for its removal, and then they would go to the BIA and be refunded the cost. So that, you know, the BIA is already helping businesses with the financial cost of dealing with graffiti, but they're hoping to actually just take away that altogether. So that's one area that it's hoped to assist, but I don't, you may have more--
I just know it's a persistent issue in the Uptown, either dealing with police, our bylaw, the restaurateurs who really want to show, put their best foot forward, they're putting on new facades or Community Improvement Plan, and then there's a tag on a building, which then we have to go through all that long process of eventually getting rid of it, as opposed to the broken window theory, where, you know, the more broken windows are, the more it looks like we're going to have more broken windows, more graffiti in this case. So it's something that helps. And I think we should signal to, maybe through Commissioner Dijkstra, to the BIA, that we're interested in the outcomes of it, the positive outcomes on it, and hearing more. Maybe we can get a report six months in or something like that, or maybe even before our strategic plan. Yeah, go ahead.
Do we know how much the BIA reimburses? How much money they're, no, I mean, like, the number, the total number that they've reimbursed businesses, like, dollar amount, not percentage?
I don't have the total dollar amount, but Tracy, the BIA executive officer, I believe, so she gave me the impression it would be about the same cost for them.
Thank you. And then to Councillor Veeth, and then Councillor Henry.
Yeah, that was my question, too. We don't have a lot of information to go on here, but what is the, what is the BIA paying now for graffiti removal? And if, like, is it 10 grand, or is it more than that? And are we, you know, I don't know, I just think we don't really have, we don't have a lot of info.
No, and the point was to move, because, you know, to be innovative city and to move forward on a pilot, they already know they're ready to move forward. And plus, it'll give us a lot of insight into how this might benefit us throughout the entire city. So that was sort of the intention of this. Councillor Henry?
And to respond to Councillor Veeth's question, the 2018 budget was $8,000 for graffiti removal, and at the board meeting where that budget was discussed, at the full meeting, the AGM where that budget was discussed, they were encouraging business owners to use this service. So my guess is they'd have spent even more if more people knew it existed and knew they could get refunded through the BIA. So it was an $8,000 budget line item in 2018, and this is slightly higher for 2019.
Wonderful, thank you. But you also had your hand up, I think.
Yeah, well, and I think I just refer in general, putting my finance and strategic planning chair cap on, that referring every single specific, very granular tactic that we might try to do as a city over three years to a high-level strategic planning conversation may not be the right orientation or mindset to bring into a strategic planning conversation, since the very detailed granular tactics are not very strategic. And so I'd encourage us to think about rolling these things up, and that that guides staff in how we lay things out, and then we can benchmark these things against the plan. You can identify ideas, but I don't think the strategic planning conversations around this table should be about very specific detailed tactics of how we engage public consultation in graffiti removal in neighborhoods involving specific residents. But that we bring those up a couple of notches.
Okay, the new Clean City Plan we'll have. Good. Councillor Bodley.
Through you, Mayor Jaworski. Just something that you said actually stuck with me, and I think this should, any, if we do decide to move forward with the pilot, something that I think we need to consider is, if the graffitiist is seeing that we're removing all of their stuff from the Uptown BIA, and then all of a sudden deciding, well, forget that, I'm going to go to other wards to tag, and that's putting pressure on our bylaw, and just moving the problem away from the BIA, I think that would be not a good use of our funds. So I would like to see in any report that comes back, if we do decide to move ahead, whether or not we've seen increased bylaw, whether or not we've seen increased incidents outside of the Uptown BIA.
Great commentary. Okay, see no further comments. We'll call a question. All those in favor of the pilot? That's all of us? Yep, okay. Thank you. Thank you for moving that. There we go. Other items of interest? Congratulations to the group on Winterloo. We finally, I think we finally had a proper winter for Winterloo, first one in a long time. We even had the dogs out yesterday, had the carving, had the dunk tank, ordered a fire help to police out with the dunk tank after the first dunk tank burst. So that was good of them. And certainly the Chili Cook-Off with the Abe Herb and Beer Town winning the two awards, that was good, with Harmony Lunch winning mac and cheese and noodle coming in as well. So congratulations to the team on a well-run Winterloo, and a great winter. Yes, Councillor Bodley, go ahead.
Sorry, just on new business, just something, normally I'm not a huge fan of corporate philanthropy. Supposedly, court-spritz philanthropy is the new marketing, but I do just want to bring attention to the fact that on Wednesday, it's Bell Let's Talk Day, and mental health initiatives are extraordinarily important to me personally, and I'm sure others on council. And I just want to, anything that any of the individuals around the horseshoe here or in staff can do to help support that initiative, I think it's a great thing for us to have more and more conversations.
Wonderful. Good catch. We have a, is that a motion? The all-council one? Motion for all council meeting to recognize the fact that we had all council meetings with the region Waterloo and area municipalities. Somebody want to move it? Councillor Freeman, Councillor Bonagor, all those in favor, acknowledging what we've done. Thank you. We have one, two, three bylaws to enact. Councillor Vasek likes bylaws? Yeah, you want to enact some? Councillor Vasek moves them. Councillor Veeth also likes them. All those in favor? It's all us. Thank you. And then I need a motion for us to go back in camera to handle one item. Councillor Freeman, Councillor Veeth? No, you aren't. All those in favor? Thank you.